I looked at these three ordinances and they all seem to have a general theme. The city manager runs the town, the city manager has to be accountable for finances, and the city manager basically has to interface with all the employees and with the city council, and that's what this tries to do. Certainly could have used other language, but this is just what I found to be somewhat redundant in all the ordinances, and I thought these were pretty cohesive, so that's why I recommended them to you.
So my several requests, one comment and a request. As we're going through and amending these, I understand you said you looked at several other ordinances and then you looked at ours and you just cut and pasted certain...
No, I looked at ours, Mr. Mayor, and threw it all out.
Well, I can understand why it may have had the words that the city manager does all these things, because at one time we may have just had one employee. But in the future, because I know you're going to be updating many of our ordinances, if we could do our best to do track changes so we can actually see the changes you're making and possibly circulate those, there are ways it would be easier. My comment, though, has to do with what was in the old ordinance was the tenure, 2.12.090, tenure. And as you know, both yourself and the city manager are the only two employees that this council has. And many council members, since I've been sitting just two years, not even two years, on this council have said, you know, these other city managers we've had have been terrible. And while there is a well-defined process in tenure, which is similar to the one that you have here with regards to removal of the city manager, I think that you've actually made it even harder. And in fact, if I look at it and contemplate it, I think that if a guy gets a city manager's job, there's no way we'll ever be able to remove them, and I think that that's inappropriate. And so I would like you to consider, and I'd like the rest of the council to consider, the old wording and potentially, if you feel that we violated any laws in the old 2.12.090, then please identify those. But if we haven't identified any, if we haven't eliminated any or broken any laws here, I'd like to suggest that we go ahead and put the old tenure section back in here. Because the process is pretty complicated to get rid of somebody. So that's my comment.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just a brief comment. A, I think it would be highly inadvisable for any public employee to have tenure. It has not worked in the school system, and it has abysmally failed wherever it's been implemented.
But that was just the lead-in. It is not, it is about getting rid of them. It's not tenure, he doesn't have tenure. The tenure section, since I know you looked at it and you knew that it wasn't very good, it says the city manager shall hold the office at and during the pleasure of the city council. That's good. Removal of the city manager shall be by one vote of a majority of the full membership of the council at a regular meeting of the council after the opportunity for the city manager to be heard, at least 30 days prior to such, which is very similar to what you have. The city manager shall be furnished with written notice stating the intention of any council member to remove him and the reason therefore, provided that prior to such removal, the city council may suspend him from duty, which I think is important, without change in his compensation pending his removal. In removing the city manager, the city council shall use its uncontrolled discretion and its action shall be final and shall not depend on any particular showing of degree or proof. Now, that's what that says. You have the 30 days, yes, and then there's all sorts of other things, we're going to discuss things, but they're going to, he can continue, and then he has a right to ask for proof, degree of proof, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I really would like you to look at the process that you've got here, and I realize it's very similar, but I'd like you to consider, and I'll pass this to you, the potential modification of this ordinance to include at least the one thing that this city council can do, and that's remove somebody who we don't feel is listening to the town or listening to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to look at that.
Thank you.
I'll also point out the reason that I didn't go with tenure, because tenure, by the way, has legal significance as a term. Secondly, I also do not believe the current process that's spelled out in the city code gives adequate shrift to due process. In fact, I believe it's unconstitutional and illegal. That's why it was removed, and that's why I recommended what I did. Now, I can give you others, but I think it would be malpractice on my behalf to give you back the tenure section that is written there. I appreciate the fact that, kind of like, we don't have CFOs and CEOs, we have to be very careful to try and use language that other cities use, because if there ever is a dispute and we're in court, the court decisions tend to rely on the sound language that comes from other city codes as well. And we, the one that we have, by the way, is very old, it was written in the '60s, and I think it was based on codes from other cities or probably written in the '40s and '50s. I don't have a problem if this is confusing or hard to follow, but please understand the reason it gives notice and it gives an opportunity to be heard, because the law requires that. It's called due process, and you have to give them a reason and an understanding. And you can't just suspend somebody, because even five people say, we think you haven't done a good job unless you give them an opportunity to respond.
That's HR policy.
And that's the, well, that's the...
That's labor law policy.
It is the law of California Supreme Court has decided.
Right, but Mr. Connors, I would also point out that you've counseled the council oftentimes, that the reason we're a general law city is we don't have to write all those things in, because we're protected by that. So I don't understand why we're writing all these things in to provide all this additional protection in for the one employee who everybody's complained about, not the one that we have here or the previous one that we had. But they've all complained that we've had problems, and so, you know, we ought to be able to, if it's already California law and being a general law city, we should not have to rewrite things and make it difficult. So if, all I'm asking, I agree with your words on tenure, it could be misconstrued, but my request on this is that you would please look at those words and maybe lighten them up a little bit, and make them council-friendly. I also not to, don't understand why, I didn't see in the previous one, the ordinance that required a two-year after somebody was a council member, that they had to be off for two years before they came here. That may be a law, that's fine, if that's the case, that's fine. If not, then if you could give us justification as to why it's not saying one.
Well, it's actually in there, but I think the mayor's saying, how come you have to do that? Because it's, there's an act, a federal law, and a state law that requires council members to be gone for a blanket, at least a year.
I think it's a year.
And most, excuse me, most communities have gone to two years, because the public deserves to know that there's been no shady deal that's been, that's been conducted between a sitting person going off the council and somebody else. And the reason for two years is because in two years, there's another election that rolls new people in, and it would be very hard for anybody to collude past that new election. And that's why communities, the modern, the modern time is now going to two years, and we can certainly change it to one year, but that's what's legally required, so that there can't be any collusion out of city.
Well, I think we should, we should have ordinances that show us the minimum required, obviously we can go longer, or if there's, if there's a choice, you know, show what's legal, and then say, you know, parentheses, I recommend this, and then we would, as a council, have a choice. But when, when, you know, the impression is, that's how I got it, is that this has all been updated to update with the law, and then go look at other previous documents and other laws, then sometimes it causes questions, so I appreciate, but I appreciate what you've tried to do for us.
Well, Mr. Mayor, what I'm trying to do is, is bring you ordinances that are state-of-the-art, that are up-to-date and new. And I certainly don't have a problem with the city council giving me direction. What I have a problem with is if I start listening to five individual council members, and some of which are going to have different points of view. Now, I would like the council to tell me, who do I listen to? Because I'm just a draftsmen here, and I have no problem in drafting this the way the council would like me to. And the problem I'm starting to have, though, is we're having a dialogue, and you're telling me what you'd like to see, and I haven't heard a vote.
Well, I'm having the conversation for the rest of the council to hear.
For sure.
And, and I'm also asking that you would show track changes. That's my comment. And this is, obviously, my comments would be, and my scrutiny over a rewrite of an ordinance of the one, really, the two, the two people that we would have, that the council has only say over, would be, you know, we would want to take more diligence on those. The other ones, obviously, the city manager is responsible for, and that person would have more, more comment. So with that, I've made my point, and I think the vice mayor would like to make a point.
Just following up on what Mayor Widener brought up about the removal of the city manager. It, in my mind, it's really very straightforward, and it gives the council absolute right and authority to remove the city manager, and its action shall be final, and it shall not depend on any particular degree showing or degree of proof at the public hearing. And so, to me, I think that it really gives the council absolute control. What it does, however, is give notice. It says that the city council has to express its intent and reasons for the termination in writing, and give that to the city manager. And then, within seven days of receipt of that, the city manager has the opportunity to respond and request a public hearing. And I think any employee that you terminate, you, we, actually, we, as a council, got into a very big sticky wicket by not giving an employee the right for due process, the right to be heard in a public hearing or in an opportunity to defend himself. And we ended up going to court and having to pay a lot of money for that. So I think that the way this is written is really very clear, and it doesn't, the removal does not depend upon any showing of degree of proof at the public hearing. And the sole purpose of the hearing is just to allow the city manager to publicly present his or her grounds for opposition to removal, prior to the city council taking final action. So I don't have a problem with the way it is written. I think it's very clear, and it gives us more authority than what the old wording in the ordinance, and it gives us more protection was written. So that's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a quick comment? I think you raise a good point, in that I had actually drafted this a couple weeks ago, and had sent it to the city manager, and I had intended that it go to all the council members, so that you had it ahead of time. It wasn't in a track, it wasn't in a track changes version, because, as I told you, I erased the current code and put a whole new one in, so everything would be a track change. Everything would be...
I assume that too.
Everything would have been highlighted as red. I meant for it to go to the city council, and I apologize, it didn't. And what I think would be helpful, if, if, if the council members would like more time, what would be helpful to me is rather than sit here and debate why things are in there and changes, if you would like to, you know, send me changes or propose changes, or even just issues, you know, why is it this way, then I could respond back to the city council with a report that could be on the next agenda, and then you could look at the reasoning for why they're like this. Now, for instance, in this one case, all other employees, before they can be terminated or have any of their liberty interests removed, have to have a SCLEA hearing. That's really what this is doing for the city manager, is establishing that SCLEA hearing, but not calling it that, because there's no SCLEA right to be the city manager who serves at your pleasure. All these other, this verbiage, it literally came out of at least two ordinances, they're exactly the same. I would be happy to relook at any individual parts of that, but in terms of making it easier, may make it less defensible. And I have kind of an obligation to give you, I think it's the best defensible document. Notice that it has nothing to do with the city manager's salary, or the benefits, or any of those kinds of things, those are totally the policy of the council. But what it does is it's legal language that I'm going to guess is probably pretty foreign to most of the council members, because you don't deal in these kinds of ordinances all the time. And I do. And that's why this is, this is, a lot of the language in here is very specifically laid out, because it's been tried and true, and you won't get sued. But I'd be happy to take individual parts of that and relook at it, if the council would like to continue this, so I can do that.
Well, what I, what we'd like to do with regards to your first comment is, as you're writing additional ordinances, or you have your eye on additional ordinances, I think that we discussed back in March, that we would get kind of a look ahead on the things that you're doing, and we could help prioritize the ones that are important, and we would know what you're going to be working on, and we could give you our comments, perhaps in advance, you could set a timetable, and we would know then, in the next month or two, you'd be working on this ordinance or that ordinance, and we could go get prepared and give back with you any comments or concerns we have on the existing one. That may be helpful, so perhaps we could discuss, or you could, you could offer us kind of your to-do list, what you're doing, and what's pending in your office, as we had discussed as a team before, and that would give us kind of a look ahead.
And actually, we did that as a start, and this was the first one on the list, and the second one on the list is rewriting the city or town's secret ordinance. And that is where my sights are set, next, once this is finalized. And both of which are woefully, two good examples of current city code sections that are woefully inadequate.
Okay, let's, well, let's go ahead and get, like, a report out. On a monthly basis, not, you know, monthly or bi-monthly, what, you know, every two months, what you're, what's on your list that you could, that's what we talked about. Any other council comments?
I'll just make one comment. I don't think any mention of tenure should be in this whatsoever, definitely could be misrepresented. Secondly, as far as I'm concerned, both the city attorney and the city manager, who are the only people reported to the council, should be considered, in my mind, is at will employees, and frankly, unless it's legally required, I don't even see why the public hearings need proposed people. You know, if the council makes a decision that they want to remove one of them, then I think the council should help the public to remove them. Would have any questions asked?
Yeah, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, it is legally required, in the sense that you don't have to give much in the way of reasons, but because whoever is going to be the city manager will probably be going somewhere else looking for work, they have to have the opportunity to refute any charges that you do make against them. You know, for instance, if you say, I think you've been stealing money from us, that could certainly stop them from getting a job in the future, and they have the right to stand before you and prove that that's not true. And that's, Supreme Court says we have to do that, and there'd be nothing else that we can, although they are technically still at will employees.
So I have some questions, too. Would be better to just go ahead and continue this until the next, next meeting?
This is actually just a first reading. It'll come back for a second reading, so now would be a good time to give your comments.
So you want to do the comments soon?
Do you want to? Okay.
It's your call, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't we, why don't we hear Jerry's comments, and then any other council members will take quick public comment, and then there's not really a vote on this, unless, all right? So.
Yeah, my comment, first comment or question is, has to deal with item B under powers and duties of the city manager. Under A, it says the point, remove, discipline, except for the city attorney and city attorney staff. Under B, it says direct and supervise the administration of all departments, et cetera. Does that include the city manager and the city manager's staff?
City attorney and city attorney's staff.
No, the city attorney is removed from that.
Well, it's not, it's not exactly clear here that, you know, that A is the overriding paragraph, including B here, so I just raise that as a, whether or not it should be inserted there again.
Yeah, technically, interestingly enough, because of the way the authorities are arranged in current city ordinance code, the city attorney's not a department, it's an outside function. It's a firm that has to come in and provide the services, so it isn't a department, but we can certainly clarify that.
I think it just might be good to do that. Then under, under L, exercise general supervision of all public buildings, parks, real and personal property, assets. I'm reading through here, and I was always thinking about the donor funds. Those are town assets that are under the ownership of the town, in a sense. And so, that, to me, is one more reason to take another look at that. I assume that the supervision of all public buildings includes the library.
Yes.
And then, and coordinate all activities of various departments would include the library as well.
As much, as much as we control, that's correct. Knowing that we don't control the staff of the libraries, that we contracted that away.
That's all I have.
Just an inquiry, under 2.08.060, B, very nice paragraph. Neither the mayor nor a council member shall give any order or instruction to any subordinate of the city manager. I wonder if you might want to consider adding, unless the city manager consents, or we had that one-half hour rule, where if it's less than one-half hour of the person's time. A small inquiry.
I don't know if it, how you want to do that, it certainly can go, the problem is, this is standard, print standard of general law city, and the reason is, because they don't want to have any individuals try to start, you know, speaking in the back door and telling the city manager what to do, so if you have a policy that you cannot do that, which is, I've never seen any city that didn't have one, including charter cities, something to basically insulate the council, whose job is to make policy and direct the city manager and the city attorney, we can certainly tweak the language, but I'm...
Yeah, or you could say without notifying the city manager, which is what I always want if I ever ask anybody a question. I don't know, it's up to you and Teresa, how we're going to do it.
This doesn't say anything about asking a question. That's always been permitted. This says you can't instruct or give an order to any subordinate. And I would hesitate in probably counseling you not to take that out, because, because, but this doesn't address, I mean, anybody can walk into the city hall and ask an employee a question, and that's just the way it is. So I appreciate that, but I think that that's kind of, it's probably not necessarily crystal clear, but it's, that's the intent of this section.
Do you have any other comments? Okay, my only comment also is on A. You know, I realize it's on that same page, yeah, there, the English connection could actually be improved a little bit, and since we took it from another city, which one holds you responsible for.
060A?
20050A, it says, I mean, it's right away it's written, but it doesn't flow well, especially when you, you use more of the positive, he shall not, and B, I would think, he shall engage in no incompatible, he shall not engage in incompatible, doesn't follow. You know, I think that there's some wording you could do, but I'm not going to allow.
Can you use some others?
So while you're pointing those out, is it okay if I take a public comment? Any public comment on A?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Peter Parker, under One Large Drive. I spoke previously about the importance of the council clarifying the relationship with the, with the town manager, particularly since you're in the process of selecting a new town manager. And I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the attorney, town attorney, for the excellent job which he's done in providing you with a proposed ordinance. I would speak to the issue that's just been discussed. Certainly, in my years as an elected official, I found it just absolutely essential that elected officials understand that their job is to supervise their CEO, and that their job is not to provide direction to the staff. And the clearer you can be on that, the better off you're going to be, and the happier you're going to be in your relationship with your town manager. So, Bill, thank you very much for the job you've done, and council, thank you for addressing this issue on timely fashion.
So, any other comments here? So it's just the first reading, so there's no... So we move on to item 21.
We're going to introduce the ordinance.
Oh, well, we're going to make an edit, you're going to, even if he's going to make some editorial changes.
Yeah, the edits will be, any edits will be, they will, actually.
Okay, all right, so we have...
I should reintroduce the ordinance?
I'll say it.
Okay, and then after you vote, at least.
I, we need to.
Yes.
Okay, fine.
I.
I, okay, there you go, thank you.
Jerry and Donnie.
You said no, you opposed, you said oppose. The record calls.
I was having a brain freeze, you know? It's all right.
It's a record show. We've got the new digital recorder, it's got you know.
I retract my position.
You can only change your position if you've already affirmed it. You can change it to a negative, it's all that.
If you can actually change it before you...
Just before you call for the vote. Let's move on. Let's move on, 21.
Let's move on.
Okay. This report was the result from a discussion that the mayor and I had, was his way of trying to bring some unity, so, do you have any questions?
Well, I can add a little bit of value to that. A number of, there was a request a while ago by both of the citizens, as well as several council members in a meeting, that perhaps a survey was done, there were some ad hoc surveys, but they, while, while, all good meaning, they weren't professionally done, and, you know, they were more ad hoc, people could fill them out if they wanted to, and in some cases, you know, there were some inconsistencies, if you go through that, not to throw, cast any, that thing on that, kind of a lot of the people said, for example, I, I don't know anything about it, I need more information, and then they went and proceeded to answer their, every one of the questions, well. So I've had, over a period of time, been worried about and wondering how we could get a little more unity on this project, and get more of a, you know, a town-wide vote, and make sure people feel that at least the town is speaking. And there is some question in a number of people's minds, including my own, as to how widespread opposition is versus apathy versus people are supporting it. And I, I see that as I ride my bike around, and as I walk through the town in the park, I speak to people on a regular basis, and I regularly say, and people are very surprised, I say, well, what do you think about the library? And should it be moved, and things like that, and people look strange at me, and so I thought, and I always get about a 50/50, by the way. But anyway, I've said that I could, I would be open to a discussion on the, doing a survey... survey. We're getting late in the game, and I believe that it's, having a professional survey is worth the money to be spent. I spoke to the city manager about my ideas, and, and she concurred that it was a, a good idea, and felt that it was, could be a unifying item for the town. And so she put it on the agenda, and got a proposal for doing it, and that's what is item number 21 is all about. And that's the history of it. So we'll have some council discussion. Do you want to add anything else? Council discussion?
I, I'm in favor, you know, this is a way to get a professional opinion of what people think. I get dozens of emails all the time, and as Bill says, I think a lot 50-50 one way or the other, and some of them are quite nasty, actually, and bring my background into the discussions in a negative way, but, you know, I'm thick-skinned, so that doesn't worry me. But my feeling is, if you're going to do a survey, it has to be a professional survey. And if you're going to do it, in this case, I would say 200 people is too little. I think we should increase it to at least 400 people. And Godby are real pros, and they have done this before. I think that, one of the things I've noticed is that I have, I have people who don't want the library in the park. I say to them, well, what are your reasons why you don't want the library in the park? They say, I don't want the library in the park. I said, but, you know, I'm an engineer, so I usually base my decisions on some form of logic. What, what's your logic? No, I just don't want the library in the park. Well, you know, that's, that doesn't give you much information. And here, I think if we do a professional survey, you know, we'll get, we'll get a lot of input. Now, the, the library committee has had lots of public meetings, but as we have seen before, there's a lot of apathy in town, and we don't get too many people to attend these meetings, so that really doesn't give us a true picture of what people think. So I would be supportive. I think in many ways, a survey can even be better than a vote, because what we get when we have votes is a very small percentage of the people responding, and then we usually just get the people who are extreme at both ends of the spectrum. Whereas in a survey, the surveyor, if he does a good job, and I think Godby's certainly professional, will actually talk to the individuals, they will then give them, hopefully, the reasons for or against, and their support for or against, and so we can get a better picture from a representative sample of the people in the affirment, what the real picture is. And therefore, that's my view of, of why I would support this.
Any other council comments?
Well, we do have a very funny town on this issue, and, and I, I agree, it's, it's difficult to say what percentage is on one side, what percentage is on the other side. What, it's, the location of the library in the park, yes or no, seems to be the hot issue. I mean, there are other things that we could survey and ask questions about, but this is, this is really the hot issue that, if we're going to do something like this, that we ought to focus on and, and ought to address. In the comments that are made, the one, the one comment that is the saying for both those in favor of the library in the park, and those that are not in favor, is, we need to vote. And so unlike my colleague here, who favors a sample, I, I favor letting all registered voters in town have a voice as to whether or not they want to have the library in the park. And I, I don't know whether, in the process of talking to Godby, you discussed the option of their preparing a, a, a mail ballot that could be sent out to each registered voter in town, and handling that process in a professional way, tallying the votes, and, reporting back to the council. But I would think that doing something like that would cost quite a bit less than $18,000 that would be required for, for doing the telephone survey sample. I think if everybody felt that they had a chance to have their voice heard, it would go a long way in at least quelling some of the criticism and some of the, lower the flame in terms of the, this issue. And the alternative, of course, is to have a, a regular election, if you want to have all people, but that, that gets more expensive. So I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that Godby does this on a regular basis, and has a very professional way of handling it that would satisfy any concerns about the process. Have you had any inquiry at all, city manager on it?
No, I didn't ask them. I know that they do mail surveys, but I did not ask them about them.
So, um, this, this is really dividing the town in oh-so-many ways, and it's really, it's just paralyzing, I think, a lot of what the council wants to do and can do, and the good things that we need to be doing for our community. Back in October, when the vote came towards, to council to identify the third site for the library, residents came with over 300 signatures to stop the votes, and, you know, let's, let's stop here right now and do a master plan or a master analysis of all of our public works buildings. That fell on deaf ears. Then they, the group went back and did their own survey, and overwhelmingly, most of the people decided, you know, responded, saying that they didn't want the library at the park. Now, that survey was not done well, it was not done professionally, so there's lots of holes in it, lots of reasons to, to not believe it. But I feel, at this late date, a survey is not the answer, and a survey will not do what the healing process that needs to be done right now. I think the only thing that's going to really heal the, the residents is a vote, straight up or down, very simple, not contrived, and not manipulated in any way, shape, or form, but just a straight answer, very simply put, to the residents, to give them the opportunity to express themselves in a democratic way. Personally, when phone surveys call...